Good evening. I'd like to call to order the December 7th meeting of the Northfield Township Planning Commission at 7:03. If you could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Stanulichow, will you please call the roll?
Aicuento.
Here.
Chick.
Here.
Dignan.
Present.
Stanulichow's here. Roman. Mr. Kuzno, I believe is absent with notice.
Correct. Alright, we do have a quorum. Next is adoption of the agenda. Anyone have any changes or...
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Moved by Stanulichow, supported by Chick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is call to the public. Anyone that would like to address the board can do so at this time by stepping to the microphone and stating your name and address for the record. We will also be having a public hearing this evening, so if you are here to speak on any of the items that are under the public hearing, you will be given an opportunity to do so when we get to that agenda item. Is there anyone that would like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, moving on. There are no clarifications from the commission. There is one correspondence that was received. It has been distributed to the members of the board. It's from Mr. Steen in regards to the public hearing, and we will address that correspondence at the time of the public hearing. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. Mr. Stanulichow?
I am moved to open the public hearing for Washington County Road Commission's request to rezone parcel B 022130004 from RTM Research Technology Manufacturing to LI Limited Industrial.
Support.
There's a motion of support to open the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. We'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here from the road commission to represent the road commission? Okay, gentlemen, is there anything you would like to add? If you do have anything to add to your presentation, or if you have a presentation to make, you're welcome to do so at this time. Step to the microphone and...
So the road commission would like to rezone to the limited industrial. They would like a service center that's basically...
You can take the microphone with you if you'd like.
They have territorial road here. It's about a mile east of the expressway, the railroad tracks at this location. I think the old Carter Lumber original is in this corner over here to give you a location. They have 15 acres and want to build about 50,000 square feet, two stories, for a service center. Generate maybe 15 or about seven or eight cars during the peak hour. We have stormwater retention here and also in the rear of the site, a little salt barn, some material storage in bins along this side. That would be open air, concrete bins. Basically, the trucks are going to come in, obtain salt, plow, any aggregates for maintenance of the roads. Mike could go into it further as far as what exactly the operation would be. So, future brine well in the rear that may happen in the future, so that's basically it. There's quite a bit of landscaping that'll go on, a berm along this side, and trees and shrubs, and then more throughout the site. Maintain some of the trees, existing vegetation. Most of the vegetation here in the middle will come out. It's basically brush and pretty minor vegetation, so it's an old farm field. This farm, you know, it's been palmed for a while. It'll be fenced, have a gate across the front. There are a few variances that we're going to request after the zoning during the site plan process.
Okay. Alright, thank you. And Mr. Sloan?
Yes.
Would you like to discuss the request?
Sure, absolutely. Just to be clear, the request on the agenda is only for the rezoning from the RTM to the limited industrial district. Although the applicants have filed a site plan application and a conditional use application, the review of the site plan or the conditional use are not on tonight's agenda because the property currently doesn't have the zoning. So, from a conceptual standpoint, it's good to see what the applicants do have in mind, but the purpose of tonight's public hearing is just on the rezoning to the limited industrial. We have a rezoning review letter dated October 27 regarding this request, and the zoning ordinance contains several conditions in terms of the findings of fact required before action can be taken on a rezoning request. Section 36-1006 subsection A includes several findings of fact in terms of whether the zoning change is justified by a change in conditions, whether there are any precedents which might result from the petition, whether it be approved or denied, the capacity of the township or other government agencies to provide any services and facilities to the site, the effect on the condition and/or the value of properties in the township and adjacent to the site, and the relation of the adopted future land use plan to the site. A rezoning to limited industrial is not expected to have any negative impacts on adjacent properties. Many of the reasons are being that to the east of the property, there is the railroad track, and across the track is a general industrial zoning district, which is a much more intense zoning district than the limited industrial. To the west and to the north is the RTM district, the research technology manufacturing district, and this district is compatible with both the LI and the GI districts. So, being adjacent to an RTM district is compatible for an LI district. And finally, to the south is an AR agriculture district, and that parcel to the south is farmed. In many cases, in an AR district, if it were a residence, we may have other findings in terms of impacts on the neighbors, but as the property to the south is farmed, the impact there is minimal. Farming uses and industrial uses many times do make good neighbors. So, in terms of impact on surrounding property use and things of that nature, the LI district for this site is not expected to have any negative impacts. Regarding the master plan, the future land use designation of the property is I industrial. The intent of that designation is to provide locations for industrial operations that can help manage the potential negative impacts of noise, odor, traffic, and outdoor storage of materials. There is an accompanying zoning plan in the master plan for the industrial future land use classification, and that zoning plan recommends the following districts: LI, GI, and RTM. Therefore, the proposed rezoning to LI would fulfill those goals of the master plan. In summary, our recommendation is that the planning commission recommend to the township board of trustees that the rezoning to LI be approved on the subject parcel for the following reasons. First, the proposed LI zoning is consistent with the future land use classification of industrial and the associated zoning plan. Second, the uses permitted in LI zoning are compatible with existing conditions, zoning classifications, and permitted uses on neighboring sites. Third, the proposed LI zoning is consistent with the pattern of development in the area. Fourth, the proposed LI zoning does not take away from a community need for RTM zoning in the area. And finally, fifth, the proposed LI zoning fulfills all of the findings of fact of section 36-1006 subsection A 1 through 5 of the zoning ordinance. So, with that, that concludes our review, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. At this time, yes, Mr. Aicuento?
In the past, Mr. Dignan, when we have had rezonings, if I can remember correctly, we've, and it was a comprehensive site plan, I believe we've approved rezoning and a site plan contingent that the township board approved the rezoning. So, I guess why wouldn't we have not looked at everything comprehensively today?
I believe that's when we've done conditional uses. We've done conditional uses and we've done site plans together. I don't believe we've ever done a rezoning and site plan together.
That is correct.
Okay.
You would...
Mr. Fink?
I just wanted to...
Mr. Stanulichow's the public hearing, so we can just discuss this.
Well, we're going to have to, yeah, let's engage the public. We can get into deliberations, deliberations on our unfinished business.
Alright, thank you.
At this time, anyone in the public that would like to address the board in favor of the rezoning of the said parcel can do so at this time. Anyone who is opposed to the rezoning of, oh, okay. State your name and address for the record. And again, this is for the Washtenaw County Road Commission's request to rezone parcel B 02213004 from RTM to limited industrial.
Good evening. My name is Tim Seville. I'm 7705 Whitmore Lake Road, Whitmore Lake, Michigan, 48189. One thing I do see or don't see on the plan, I do not see any XL desalines. And with the traffic on in North Territorial, don't you think that should be applied here?
That will be addressed at a site plan. At this point in time, it's simply the land use that's being considered, not the actual plan for the property. But during that time, traffic studies and things of that sort will be looked at and considered.
Okay, because one of the things there is that instead of, like, down territorial, it's not necessarily against them going in. I think it'd be great for them to be in there. But if it's possible to maybe, like, as we go down territorial, as we start building this area, instead of having a driveway here, like, let's say on the south side, and a driveway 500 feet up on the north side, what if you started trying to put some of these driveways across from each other so that maybe later on, if you had to put in, like, let's say a traffic light or something else, that you wouldn't have, like, all these different zigzag of entrances to parking lots? I mean, I don't know if you know what I'm talking about or not. If that's clear or not, what I'm trying to say?
Yep.
So that, like, I know there is, I know there is a subdivision there, or not a subdivision, but there are buildings there, and if we could try to put their parking lot, their driveway entrance across from another one, you know, that way, you know, like, the cross traffic, if you had left and right turns, then you wouldn't have this constant, you know? I don't know if that makes sense or not.
It does.
What you're trying to explain. So, but that was it. And I'm glad to see us there. And the only other thing I'd like to see about these rezonings, and I know you can't force it, I know you can't prove it or anything, but let's maybe try to get some of this work stay in town, just like Detroit does. You know, if these companies are going to come in here, I know you can't pass an ordinance for it, but, you know, I'd like to see these companies, if they're going to come in here and start rezoning and start building these things, let's try keeping some of this work in town, instead of maybe some of it going out so much.
Alright.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else that would like to address the board in favor of the project? We'll get, yeah, we're going to the public right now? We may ask you up during deliberations as well? Alright, anyone opposed to the rezoning that would like to address the board at this time? On the Washtenaw County rezoning? Can you come on up and address, make, state your name and address for the record, please?
Holly McNichol, 7024 Nollar. Couple of questions. You went over it kind of fast. Carter Lumber, we call it Carter Lumber, whatever that trucking company, that property is currently zoned, what?
Are we talking about the property to the north?
Northeast.
Northeast is GI General Industrial.
Okay. And...
And directly north is RTM.
And immediately east isn't?
It would be just east of the tracks.
General Industrial.
On the north side. If you approve this after word, is there anything you can do about how this is going to look?
Well, we would, yeah. Yeah, when we go through site plan, site plan will address the look, the screening that's necessary, the aesthetics, the traffic requirements. All of those things are discussed at site plan.
And after they're in business, is there anything, and this might be more of a general question, is there anything this township can do to enforce ordinances that we have, say for lighting for hours of operation? Because the current people that are on what was Carter Lumber don't adhere to any of those ordinances now, so naturally, living right by there scares me, this additional trucks.
Right. The township, the township does have the ability to enforce its ordinances?
Does it.
It does have the ability to do that?
Does it do it?
That's not a question I can answer. You'd have to direct that to the board, and they'd have to direct that to the public safety.
So this is, this is what bothers me about this, because we already have really loud truck noises at all times of the day. I guess that's all the questions I have, so, in other words...
Yeah, I mean, your question about enforcement, it needs to be directed to the board. I don't know if Ms...
Yeah.
Right, to the township board.
Can I just comment on that?
Yeah, Ms. Chick, please.
If you have any issues, please address it to the, actually, the township. The Public Safety Building, Mr. Fink, he can handle that as well. Or you can bring it to the board, you know, make it known that you have an issue, and it will be addressed. Does a general industrial, and is this, they want limited industrial, right?
Correct.
Do we know what variances they're going to ask for?
At this time, I don't. They have submitted a site plan, but to be honest, I haven't reviewed the site plan against the zoning ordinance because that step comes later. So, in terms of which variances they may be asking for, and whether those variances would even be probable, I can't answer that.
Is the granting of the rezoning, does that make the variances more probable, do you know?
No, it does not.
No, the process, once we rezone, and the site plan are completely separate processes. The site plan also cannot be administered unless, if there's variances needed, they'd have to apply for those variances. And we don't know what those variances are until they apply, or until they've identified them to staff. Yeah, Mr. Fink?
Just so you know, ma'am, the variances are done at a different board.
Yeah.
So, there's, there's no greater probability that they would be granted or not granted. Actually, this board is not the board that, in this particular case, that would grant those variances. It would be a zoning board of appeals.
Has, in, has the Washtenaw County Road Commission said that the zoning for them would be contingent on any of those variances?
You would have to speak with them directly about that.
So they haven't mentioned it to you?
Well, we don't have, I'm not sure that that question has been asked of the Washtenaw County Road Commission. That's their decision determination as to the process. For tonight, we are simply, the planning commission is simply looking at whether or not the use is appropriate, whether or not the land use in particular is appropriate. So, on the zoning side of the equation, relative to what it's going to look like, what the landscaping is, what the lighting is, those are all site plan particulars and details that'll come at the next step.
And backing up a bit about affecting the surrounding properties, I do have to differ with you on that. It does greatly affect the people that live on Nollar either side of North Territorial.
Oh, no question. I agree with that.
There is not, there is not, no impact.
No, I agree with you.
And it won't be positive.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying there's not any impact. I'm just saying, for tonight, the planning commission is addressing the zoning portion of the process. The portion of the process that's related to lighting, that's related to signage, that's related to landscaping, that is the next step of the process that the planning commission will have to vote on.
I meant the rezoning does, does affect the properties around, and I think that you had said that it, that it wouldn't, that you see no negative impact.
Yeah, we look at the, we look at the adjacent properties and the surrounding area in terms of making that determination. It doesn't guarantee that any kind of use, because the grant, or the approval for a rezoning doesn't approve just one use. It opens up any use in the district. But any of those uses in the district have to abide by the noise standards, the lighting standards, any environmental standards that are covered by the zoning ordinance or any other township ordinances. So, we take the closest look at who the adjacent neighbors are, who would see it, who would be the most affected.
And just input a little, just, we don't have to be adjacent for it to negatively affect us.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board at this time? Either in favor or against, or in general on this subject? Seeing none?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Motion by Aicuento. Supported by Chick. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carry. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance text to repeal ES Enterprise Service District and rezone all existing Enterprise Service District parcels to general commercial district parcels.
I move to open a public hearing for said comments.
Support. Okay, motion, motion by Stanulichow, supported by Aicuento. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carry. Gentlemen, you are remaining, correct? Okay. Alright, we'll move on. With that, I'll ask Mr. Sloan to discuss the repeal of Enterprise Service and the rezoning of ES to general commercial.
Thank you. This, in part, goes into a little bit of what we'll discuss later in the agenda, which is the corrections to the zoning map, the most recent version being dated November 9, 2016. The reason I mention that is because that correctly delineates the ES district, which is on the west side of Main Street, between Horseshoe Lake and Whitmore Lake. It's 12 contiguous parcels, and that's the only ES-zoned area in the township. Over the last several months, the planning commission has looked at ways to streamline some of the regulations in the zoning ordinance, one of which would be to reduce the number of zoning districts where there's an opportunity where there might be overlapping regulations or an easier way to do that. And so, one of the first areas we looked at was the ES district. The ES district allows a collection of different commercial uses and some other office-related uses. And in reviewing the regulations of both the ES district and the general commercial district, we looked at ways where we could propose elimination of the ES district and rezone those properties to general commercial, while also incorporating some of the uses permitted in the ES district into the general commercial district, so that a lot of those uses would be preserved. And so, in working through those items, that's what we did. So, what's proposed tonight would be Article 20, those sections that deal with the ES district would be proposed to be eliminated, and the areas currently zoned ES would be proposed to be rezoned to general commercial. There are a few uses that are proposed to be added to the list of permitted uses in general commercial, as well as the conditional uses in general commercial. So, those that existed in ES have been moved to the general commercial as either permitted or special land uses. So, any of the uses that would have been permitted under the current regulations would be permitted in some fashion under the proposed regulations of the general commercial. So, even though we're, we're talking at this point of the public hearing of eliminating the ES district and rezoning them to general commercial, these amendments go in tandem with those proposed amendments to the text of the general commercial, which we'll discuss at the next, one of the next public hearings here. So, with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. At this time of the public hearing, we will ask if any members of the public are here that would like to address the board in favor of the rezoning and the repeal of the Enterprise Service District to general commercial, you may do so at this time. If there's anyone here opposed, you may address the board at this time.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for item B, 8B. 8, yeah, 8B, yes.
Motion by Aicuento, supported by Stanulichow. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item C. It's the proposed amendments to the Northfield Township Zoning Ordinance text to repeal the Highway Commercial District and rezone all existing highway commercial properties to general commercial.
I moved open a public hearing as, with the commentaries as presented.
There's a motion by Stanulichow, supported by Aicuento. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. The proposed amendment in this, for this public hearing, is to repeal the Highway Commercial District and rezone all Highway Commercial parcels to general commercial. This is similar to what is proposed in the ES district, although there are more areas of the township that are zoned Highway Commercial, so it's more of an impactful proposed zoning amendment. And in the same fashion, many of the uses in the Highway Commercial District, in fact, all the uses, are incorporated in the general commercial district amendments as either permitted uses or conditional land uses, and some of those I'll get into in a moment. We have received some comments already about the proposed rezoning, and some of which I do want to, to address, and I'm sure there may also be members of the public that will, that will speak, but I'll address what I can. Before us tonight, there's a letter from a property owner off of Coil Road with a concern.
Yeah, let me read that, just so we have that into the record. It is from Paul Steen of 7848 Coil Road, Whitmore Lake, dated December 7. To whom it may concern, our house is located at 7848 Coil Road, which previously was Highway Commercial HC, and is on the list to be rezoned to GC General Commercial District. We have lived in our house since 2005. To the best of our knowledge, the parcel has held an occupied house since, since at least the 1950s. When we believe the house was built, records seem to be spotty on the exact construction date. It defies logic sense, logical sense, that our property and the surrounding properties were ever zoned commercial in the first place. This is a residential area on a residential street. Given that the parcel is to be rezoned, we ask that, we ask for the right thing to be done, and to rezone our property to the appropriate residential district, zoning district, is not fair to group our residential properties in with a larger group of parcels that happen that, that perhaps should be commercial. Since the work is going to be put in anyway to rezone things, please look at each individual parcel and rezone it appropriately, rather than doing a bulk rezoning. Our house is at 7848 Coil, should be residential, not commercial. Thank you, Paul Steen.
And in, in looking at, looking at that proposal, currently it's zoned HC, and the proposal is to rezone not just that parcel, but every district in the HC zone in that area to general commercial. In looking at that area, which is a residential area in that part, the master plan classifies it as commercial and recommends a commercial zoning for the area. So, to take it from a commercial zoning classification to a residential classification, we would recommend amending the master plan before doing that, just to have the policy of the master plan consistent with the legislative action of changing the zoning. So, but the purpose that's HC, and the purpose for rezoning that to general commercial is because the master plan does classify that area as commercial. There, there are two other items where we had received some comments, one of which was a property owner on Main Street had asked about one parcel... owner on Main Street had asked about one parcel not far across the street from where we are now, where there's an existing billboard on the parcel. And in looking at that particular parcel, it had not received, or it was not listed in the property subject to the rezoning, because in looking at it, that particular property with the billboard is currently in the OR Office Residential District. So, it's not subject to the proposed rezoning tonight. And that is, that's relevant, because the HC district currently permits billboards, and the general commercial district does not. So, anything that's a billboard in the HC district, if it were to exist and be rezoned to general commercial, they would be legal non-conforming signs, which means they could continue to be used, copy can be changed, certain repairs can be made, and the structure can exist. In doing a quick review through the HC district, we didn't see any billboards that were existing in the HC district. There may be some, but when we looked through on Google Maps, we didn't see any that popped up. So, many of the existing billboards in the township are located in zoning districts that don't permit billboards. So, many of them are just legal non-conforming structures. They exist, they continue to exist, and we're not aware of any kind of impact by the proposed rezoning from HC to general commercial, because we're not aware of any billboards that exist in HC. Doesn't mean that there aren't any, but if there were, and it was rezoned to general commercial, that billboard, if it was legally established, could still exist. And then finally, I spoke with a property owner who owns property in an HC district off of Eight Mile at the interchange of US 23, and one of his concerns was taking away the auto repair use that's in the HC district now. Currently in the HC district, auto repair station uses are a permitted use. So, if somebody comes in with an application with a site plan that use is permitted, there's no conditional use process. One of the proposed changes with the general commercial is to allow the auto repair use, but as a special land use, because while some areas are easier than others to have auto repair uses, we may not want them everywhere in the general commercial, just in certain areas, so we keep them as conditional uses. However, that, that property owner did have concerns that, you know, there, if the zoning amendment were to take place, there are some areas closer to interchanges that he felt where auto repair and gas stations should be permitted uses, and others farther away, perhaps conditional uses. So, that was a concern that was raised. We discussed it over the phone. Obviously, there's no resolution to that, but we discussed that concern, and I did want to pass that along.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sloan.
Thank you.
At this time, having read the correspondence that we did receive, I will now open the public that would like to address this board in favor of the rezoning that is being proposed? Is anyone in favor? Okay, anyone opposed? Again, this is the repeal of the Highway Commercial District and rezoning all Highway Commercial parcels to general commercial district. Please state your name and address for the record. You can pick the microphone up if you'd like. It does have to be close to be heard. Thank you.
My name is Earl, ladies, and I represent...
Hang on, Earl, just a second. Can you try that now? I wasn't hearing the microphone.
Is that okay?
You guys, there we go, now we're on.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
I'm sorry. Again, my name is Earl Lafave. I represent 23 LLC, and the property in question is at 435 West Eight Mile. You might know it as formerly being the Woodbridge property, and it's approximately 25 acres. In late 19, excuse me, in late 2006, early part of 2007, the property was zoned general industrial, okay? And I requested and received the rezoning to Highway Commercial, with the intention of developing the project with automotive-related businesses that would be derived from the traffic on the expressway, such as service centers, such as restaurants, hotels possibly. Needless to say, the recession put a damper in that plan. My concern is that the permitted uses that were allowed under Highway Commercial, as your planning consultant was talking about just a minute ago, that the more intense uses would still be permitted, if not adjacent, or at least within a certain distance from the actual expressway. Under the old Highway Commercial zoning, there was language in there that spoke to the zoning being used to, or the zoning being intended to derive business from the traffic that was on the expressway. So, I would ask that the rezoning, as your consultant was talking about a minute ago, have at least some of the permitted uses that are currently allowed under Highway Commercial. And if that had to be limited within a certain distance of the expressway, I would totally understand that. I would like to understand what will be permitted as permitted uses versus conditional uses. And unfortunately, I haven't had a chance to pick up the ordinance yet, but I will be picking it up, because Ms. Bird has prepared that for me. And I would like to be able to review that. The other thing is the rezoned property that we have, after going through this very long extended recession, and having virtually no interest in the property, because we did demolish the existing buildings. They were unfit for leasing or uses by industrial people, so we, we opted to demolish and remove the, the building and all of its foundations. And with that, we did that in anticipation of using it for Highway Commercial. Again, through that long recession, there was virtually no interest in the property, as, as, as many places. And now that the economy has picked back up again, we are receiving a considerable amount of interest in the property. But again, it will be for more highway-intensive or highway-type of uses, such as service centers, hotels, restaurants, those type of things. I know that many of those things are permitted under your general commercial, but I would also like to be able to have at least some of the uses that were permitted uses under Highway Commercial retained under the general commercial. And that, that's my request, or my hope, that we will be able to at least keep some of those uses as permitted and not as conditional.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate your time, Mr. Lafave.
My name's Dale Brewer. I live at 11548 East Shore Drive, Whitmore Lake. I represent DAB Property Consulting LLC. Again, I guess I have to kind of reiterate the comments that Mr. Lafave just made. I think you're making a drastic change by eliminating the words in the whole zoning district of Highway Commercial. It's a very recognized, universal type of zoning for the types of uses that you have, and it also, it becomes a draw. General commercial does not have the same draw when somebody from out of the area is looking at these properties. They're not going to be looking at it as a Highway Commercial use. And secondly, the same is what Earl said. You've taken many of the Highway Commercial uses that were a accepted use under Highway Commercial. Under general commercial, you're making them a conditional use, which is a more difficult process in the zoning process with additional steps and costs. And you're going to be discouraging the things that you're trying to encourage with growth within the corridor, and the type of growth that you're going to end up getting. So, I would encourage you to go back and take a second glance at it as well, and look at some of those uses, and put them back where they should be. Keep them as, and, and even maybe not do away completely with the Highway Commercial zoning district, because I, I think it's going to, in essence, hurt you more in the long run, as you're looking to develop some of these parcels. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Anyone else that would like to address the board at this time? Hearing none?
Make a motion to close the public hearing regarding 8C.
Motion by Iquento, supported by Chick. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the proposed amendments to the Northfield Township Zoning Ordinance text to revise general commercial residential office, local commercial, general provisions, signed regulations, and supplementary regulations and standards, and to delete floor-area ratio standards from general commercial.
So moved.
Motion by Stanley Joe?
Supported.
Supported by Chick. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carry. Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. So, in addition to the previous public hearings where we were just talking about the rezoning and the repeals, this is the part of the public hearing where we actually get into the, the amendments themselves, and some of the changes themselves. Starting with the general commercial district, there are several changes made to that district, and most of which are incorporating uses in the essential service district and the Highway Commercial district, to bring those uses into the general, to make it more of a comprehensive district. In looking at the, the highway dis, the Highway Commercial district, it, the, the intent statement of the district, it is well-intentioned, but the actual implementation of the district hasn't, hasn't yielded the type of results that a typical Highway Commercial district would. For example, in the Highway Commercial district, currently retail uses are conditional uses. Retail is not even permitted. A lot of the office uses, service uses are not even permitted as permitted uses or conditional uses in the Highway Commercial district. So, that district, as it's currently written, is very light in terms of land use. So, we, the changes themselves are, all of the conditional uses in the Highway Commercial and the permitted uses, they've been incorporated into the general commercial. The auto service station use has been moved from a permitted use to a conditional use, as has the motel and hotel use. On the conditional uses in the HC district, the retail uses have been moved from conditional to permitted in the general commercial. The outdoor seating for restaurants has been moved from conditional in HC to permitted in general commercial. So, we, we've seen a little bit, some where we, number one, we allow a lot more uses in the general commercial. Second, there are some that are permitted in Highway Commercial that do get moved to conditional uses because of where else they could appear in that district, and having some control over the location. But third, there are, there are conditional uses in Highway Commercial that would now be permitted uses in general commercial. So, there is some movement with, with uses here and there. Now that we can't go back to it and try to see if there's anything within a certain proximity of a highway, you know, we may want to look at having a, as a permitted use, based on the comments received. But that's all just to say that there are a lot of amendments to the general commercial district, and many of which are because the ES and the Highway Commercial district were trying to accommodate all those uses that currently exist today. We didn't want to, you know, exclude any uses if there was either a current use operating, or a viable chance of having those uses in the future. Also, in the general commercial district, we propose to eliminate the floor-area ratio requirement. That's mostly because there is a lot coverage requirement of 25%, and there are setback requirements as well that would apply. So, to also have a floor-area ratio requirement, that would normally apply to much higher buildings, if you're looking at four, five, six, or more stories, where you implement a floor-area ratio. But because there's a maximum height of 45 feet there already, the floor-area ratio just doesn't, doesn't apply. With a maximum lot coverage of 25% and a building height limit of 45 feet, the floor-area ratio will never get close to 80%. So, in these cases where you control coverage and height, the floor-area ratio is really not worth keeping. The next district that we look at, and there are just, just two minor amendments in the residential office district. Currently, home occupations are listed as conditional uses, typically in a residential office use. If you're looking at permitting office uses and single-family uses, we propose making home occupations principal permitted uses. It's a good halfway point between a residential use and an office use. So, those are the only changes in the residential office district. Next, in the local commercial district, we propose some amendments to the permitted uses. They're fairly minor amendments. They are the subsections that prohibit any kind of drive-in type of use. It's implied in the district that in local commercial, drive-in uses or drive-through uses are not permitted uses. So, we are just explicit there with the permitted uses. If someone were to apply for one, it would be under a conditional use or under some other zoning district, because not even in the more intense commercial districts do you, we find drive-through uses as permitted uses. So, we wanted to be explicit in the local commercial district. The next two, or three amendments relate to the signs, and they're more housekeeping amendments. And if the ES and HC district are repealed, then we recommend eliminating the references to those districts in the sign sections of the zoning ordinance. And the next amendment deals with the storage of materials. This is one that we've spent some time looking at. The major amendment is in Section 36-701, Number 4, Subsection D. And currently, right now, the, the regulation for the outdoor storage, in this case, requires that a six-foot screen wall be constructed around the perimeter, with the screening of evergreens optional. And what we recommend is doing something opposite of requiring a staggered double row of evergreen trees, at least eight feet high in height, and spaced 15 feet on center at the time of planning, and then making optional at the discretion of the Planning Commission, whether to have an opaque fence or a masonry wall. And the reason for this is that if someone has an outdoor storage use, a six-foot wall oftentimes won't, won't have an impact. Number one, the piles could be higher than the wall, and if there's machinery moving the piles, you can see over the wall. The wall will be a physical barrier, but it won't help with any of the noise, dust, and the site. Conversely, having a staggered double row of evergreen trees, it may not provide 100% screening on day one because of the spacing, but as, but it's spaced at eight, 15 feet, and at eight feet high, over time, as they grow together, that will create a much higher wall. That will help with the noise, the dust, the site, and, and things of that nature. Plus, the, in this subsection, the Planning Commission would retain the right to require a fence or a masonry wall if it felt the need to. This section also references the acceptable trees that are allowed in the zoning ordinance, as well as the maintenance standards. So, this is something where the outdoor storage of materials, whether someone can do it or not, it doesn't really change, but it bolsters the screening requirements and makes them more robust. And finally, in the supplementary regulations and standards, the last amendment that we propose are text amendments to the outdoor seating and service standards. Currently, right now, the standards are fairly light, and they leave a lot to be determined and enforced by the Planning Commission, which doesn't give the applicant much predictability, or the Planning Commission much predictability. And it's subject to the Planning Commission at that time in terms of looking at it. So, there wouldn't be an even standard. So, what we propose are a number of best practices that we've seen in other ordinances for outdoor seating, that limits the time of the year, hours of operation, number of occupants, depending on what can be approved administratively, versus if it's over a 20, a certain threshold, we have it at 20 occupants, then it's approved by the Planning Commission. So, these are generally best practices, and it allows an applicant predictability if they have an existing restaurant that they want outdoor seating. If they meet the standards and they want to have 20 occupants or fewer, then they come in, they get their permit. If they want to go more than 20 occupants, then they come to the Planning Commission. And if it's a new restaurant, and they want to include outdoor seating as part of it, they know the exact standards to meet, they can show it on the site plan, they know what the standards are going in, we know what the standards are to review for, and it would make the process much easier. So, that's, that's a lot of information, those are a lot of amendments, so I'll be happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. At this time, in the public hearing, we'll ask if any members of the audience would like to come forward and address the board in favor of the proposed amendments? If there's anyone opposed to the proposed amendments? Okay, I believe the comments from the previous public hearing will carry over to, to this, as this is the actual text that we were addressing. this is the actual text that we were addressing. Just wanted to state that for the gentleman, the two gentlemen in the audience that had mentioned something. With no further comments.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for item 8D.
Motion by Iquinto. Supported by?
Support.
Stan Alicio. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is reports, committee reports, board of trustees report. Ms. Chick?
The board of trustees met on November 15th. It was a short meeting. We had a presentation from Hannaford, Pepper and Falk regarding the audit report, and the township is in very good condition. Thank you. And we, yeah, knock on wood. Also, took a resignation of our code enforcement officer, Mr. Lenahan left us, so we'll be looking for someone new. That's all I have.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Chick? Yes, Mr. Iquinto.
That was the last meeting of the, the past board, is that correct? Okay. The first meeting of the new board will be?
On the 15th.
Okay.
Next week, right?
Next week.
Thank you.
Okay, there is no ZBA report this evening. Staff report? Is there anything from staff? Nothing from staff? And Mr. Sloan, anything from?
Nothing else to report.
All right, excellent. Well, moving on to unfinished business, the first item on unfinished business is the Washtenaw County Road Commission's request to rezone parcel B 0221300004 from RTM to limited industrial. Yes, please, Mr. Stan Alicio?
I make the motion to recommend to the township board to rezone parcel B 022130004 from RTM Research Technology and Manufacturing to limited industrial.
Or some motion?
I want to clarify, with the stipulations documented in the planner's note, letter to the planning commission dated October 27th, 2016.
Okay, there's been a motion by Stan Alicio, supported by Iquinto. Discussion on the motion. Yes, Mr. Iquinto?
I have a question. It wasn't clear, has that property been, this would be for the, it says owner, so I'm assuming that the Washtenaw County Road Commission has purchased that property, or are they going to be a tenant?
No, we've been, we've been owners for four years.
Step to the microphone, please. Just those folks at home can't hear you otherwise. All right. The question was whether or not?
Yeah, we have, we bought the property approximately four years ago. We're the entity that took down the old buildings.
Okay. So Washtenaw County Road Commission?
The Road Commission owns the property, yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And I believe this was the old RV service garage, wasn't it? Yeah. Any other questions on the motion? Yes, please, Mr. Roman.
Are we going to hear from the engineer on the report, on his report?
We certainly can.
I would like to.
Absolutely.
Before we vote on that. That's one item, but I do have some other questions unless you'd like to entertain that first.
Go ahead with your questions. Either way.
I have some questions for the applicant, actually. I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Mike Burdick.
Okay. Can you describe what the, and I understand it goes into other details that may be further past this meeting, but I think, can you, can you describe the issue with the brine, the area on the site, and what exactly it says for future use? Can you give a more detail on what might be there?
Yes. We, we use the brine for dust control in the summer, and also in the winter, we use brine to stimulate the salt, because below 20 degrees, the salt doesn't, if you don't pre-wet it to get it activated, it doesn't work. So that's what the brine, we have, we will have brine stored up there that we truck in. We're looking at, in the future, to possibly look at putting a well in ourselves for our own use, not for commercial use, just for our use. We have, we currently operate one up in Stockbridge as well for that purpose.
So you're looking at a storage, a storage bin, obviously of some kind?
No, that area that's called out is for a, for a jack, a pump.
Just the water, just the water supply?
No, for the brine. Go down?
You're going to make your own brine?
Go down deep enough to find?
What I'm saying is the brine pre-made and stored, or is it made as readily available?
It comes out of the ground, right? It depends on the consistency. Right now, we're pulling 28 out of Stockbridge, and we're watering it down to 26%.
What types of gallons per day are you, are you proposing, that you use in Stockbridge?
I don't know that offhand, sir.
Significant amount?
Significant amount, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, I know it wasn't you, it was the other gentleman that made the presentation, but can you, can you explain some of the variances that you may be requesting? You mentioned?
They may not have that as, they may not know that as well yet. We're not going through site plan.
He proposed it.
Oh, yeah. But this is site, this is not site plan, this is simply rezoning.
I understand that.
And what they're using the property for is not conditioned upon the rezoning. The rezoning is completely separate from the questions you're asking.
Not necessarily.
It is. It absolutely is. I disagree with you completely, sir.
Is there, is there an objection to my request to ask a question?
It's not relevant to the question before us or the motion on the table.
You can probably answer.
I'm just saying it's not relevant to the question on the table.
Right now, right now, the Road, the Road Commission is dependent on our engineering
and our architects right now, and they're working out the project to whether or not they have to, there are any variances for us, and working with the plan right now. The Road Commission does not know. I do not know without all those variances, yes.
Does the other gentleman? I'm sorry, I didn't catch his name.
Mr. Wante.
Thank you.
Yes, Simon Bob Wante with Washtenaw Engineering, and the, I'm not, yeah, as in, you want me to, it sounds like there's a debate, do I, do you want to go through?
You can go forward with it.
Okay.
Yep, if you have, if you have the answer, you can answer the question.
I have specific concerns, do you have any?
I don't have, I do propose in the presentation, so my question is?
Actually, I've had the conditional use, use for this zoning. So I'm not sure that?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Patrick, but basically, just our, just the function of us having trucks in that area is, is the question? You recall?
Well, if it's associated with a, with a permitted or a conditional use, you know, if it's, if it's part of the site plan, it's shown as a physical feature on the site plan. If it's part of a conditional use, there may be conditions in terms of whether it's hours of operation or locations, things of that nature, which would come later in the process, once we're looking at the site plan, talking about what's there, and seeing what the externalities would be on the neighbors, if any.
So it would be conditional uses, that's the list I have here, is a conditional use, not?
So not necessarily variances?
Not necessarily variances. We haven't got that far yet. We don't know.
That's why I brought the question, because you spoke of the variances, so.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. Conditional uses is what we're going to be applying for for the zone. Enters one, two, three, four, five, six, six conditional uses.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Roman?
If I may?
Yeah, please.
This facility is going to bring the crews back up into this neck of the woods. Right now, we're pulling, the trucks are coming out of Michigan Avenue Carpenter Road south of Ann Arbor. So we have a contract with the state of Michigan to maintain the highway, so this truck operation, this site here, will have that first truck that goes out into three during the storms, and then also take care of the other four townships. We have Ann Arbor, Salem, Northfield and Superior. That works out of the, that'll be trucking out of this job, so.
All right, thanks.
We run seven to 3:30 during the week. The wintertime, we'll run seven, between 4:00 AM and 8 o'clock AM.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzma.
Real quick.
Yes, sir.
What, what's the projected depth of that brine well? I'm not familiar with that at all.
Well, brine is, brine is usually related with petroleum, so we're talking, we're talking somewhere around a mile.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But it also varies, because there's, there are a number of brine wells in this area already up and running.
For your purposes, or for other?
Other, other.
Industry, really?
Yes, sir.
Good to know.
All right. One other question. Do you intend to, the facility out on Pontiac Trail?
Yes.
Six miles, is that what it is? Is that going to stay functioning, or will this replace that?
This is the replacement for that.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you. All right, thank you. And I'll ask Mr. Rushlow if you could come up, and, thank you. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone, thank you. We did have the opportunity to review the application for rezoning, and sent a letter dated November 30th, 2016, from our office at OHM to the township. We also took the liberty at that time, since we had the application, to review the conditional use. I wasn't aware that we were doing, that it would be a separate, which makes sense, that it'd be separate, but, so the letter is a little more detailed than what we're discussing here today, because it does address the conditional uses as well. In relationship to, directly to the rezone, I'll point your attention to page two at the top of page two or three of our letter. The one thing that we do typically look at from an engineering perspective on a rezoning application is, what is the traffic impact from the rezone, going from the current zoning as it sits today, to what they're proposing with the change in zoning? With that, we refer to the Institute of Traffic Engineers, the IT Trip Generation Manual, to review the information, which is a guideline that's commonly used in traffic engineering, in the traffic engineering industry, to approximate number of trips from different uses on properties. With this proposed use, and what their engineer has shown, and we verified on the way they did their, their counts, the trip generation for this site would be, an increase would be pretty minimal, overall, based on their approximations. They'd be showing in peak hours in AM about eight trips, and in the PM, seven additional trips from the project. One thing that we, that we do note is, you know, when we get to site plan level in the next few steps, if this does go through and get approved, a lot of times with a, with a large project coming in or a big change in use, you may require a traffic impact study, a more detailed analysis of how the traffic may impact the existing road network, to see if there's any improvements that may need to be done to mitigate those impacts from the proposed development. In this case, just from the preliminary numbers, it would appear that they would not need to do that next step of doing a full traffic impact assessment. The reason I say that is, we look to another guide, which is called, basically, it's a study called Evaluating Traffic Impact Studies: Recommendation of Practices for Michigan Communities. And in there, really, it doesn't start to require that real in-depth analysis of traffic impacts until you're increasing the trips to the site by about 50 trips at the peak hour. Being eight and seven is their calculated additional peak trips, that's far below the threshold of when we look to have more detailed analysis done. So I just wanted to note that for your consideration with the, with the rezone. There is one other thing that we did, that we, that we did note in our letter that I asked be addressed at a later time, is we are interested in actually seeing some numbers on their, on their true operations, and what they anticipate having in their, in their real peak hour. Obviously, for this site, I'm assuming it would be during a snowfall event where they have trucks coming in and out for plowing and picking up salt. The numbers in the IT Trip Generation are based off a truck terminal, a number of employees, not necessarily a plowing operation. There's a number of uses in that, in that manual, but it doesn't specifically have one for, you know, road commissions doing snow plowing. So we would look for a little more information just to make sure when we get there in that next step, that we don't need to go to that next, more detailed analysis of a traffic impact study. With that, I mean, that, from a rezoning perspective, that's the, that's the, our review comments in a nutshell.
Thank you, Mr. Rush.
If we have any questions, we'll turn to you.
Ms. Chick?
Yeah, I have a question about the commercial communication apparatuses. Is that something they're adding, or they want to add on that property? It's 180 feet tall.
Yeah, it is something that they're, that they're proposing to add, and that would require a conditional use on the property, is my understanding.
And that would be on the north side of the property, which is closer to North Territorial?
That is what the preliminary site plan received showed, yes, on the north side.
Okay, is that used for, is that basically a cell phone tower?
Radio tower.
It's a radio tower, so, because it couldn't function along with the new one that they're putting in down at fire station number two, right? They couldn't use that one? You couldn't add to that one, to use that as opposed to putting a new tower in on North Territorial?
I would ask the Road Commission for clarification. It's my understanding it's used for their own internal radio communications, but I don't know if there's any ability for co-locations or that like, we'd have to defer to the Road Commission to answer that question.
All right. I don't have another question I do have to, I would suggest, if the drawing that was proposed, the concept drawing, I understand it's real basic, and there's still more to be added to that, that they consider buffering on the North Territorial side of the road, because this is going to be a storage and maintenance facility, and we do not, we want to maintain the aesthetics of North Territorial as best we can, and noise and environment, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. Mr. Stan Alicio?
Again, I know we're sort of off base here a little bit, because we're not doing the site plan, but somebody made a mention about for trucks turning in and out of this structure, perhaps making a, you know, left turn lane in that area, because it's right on the other side of the railroad tracks, and the speed limit is 50 miles an hour, so these trucks turning in and out onto 50 mile an hour traffic, or stopping traffic just on the other side of the railroad tracks may end up being an impact that way. So, you know, when the time comes, that may be something to look at.
Yep, certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? The nice thing is, is if they do decide to come forward, it is a conditional use, so that if it is considered and approved, it would be under conditions, that, conditions that this board gets to set. So are there any other comments? Yes, Mr. Kuzma.
Patrick, is LI the best proposed zoning for this, or would GI work more appropriately?
Based on what was initially proposed, based on the material distribution center, the outdoor storage, and the possibility of a communication tower, those are all things that are in the LI district, whether, I think material distribution is a permitted use, but anything outdoor storage and commercial communication tower, those are conditional uses. Because the LI accommodates those, I would recommend the LI instead of the GI. The GI allows much more intense uses, and that could, that may accommodate the applicant, but it could allow a lot of other types of uses that we wouldn't be anticipating at this point, but perhaps if they didn't build their service center and they sold it to somebody else that wanted to use it for a much more intense use, you may find some permitted uses in GI that you wouldn't necessarily want in this area. And our existing GI district is all east of the railroad tracks, so taking it westward, I don't think, you know, if they were to apply to that, that would be a whole other conversation. I think because the LI could accommodate all their uses in one fashion or another, that was probably the easiest way to go.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, will you do a? Hearing none, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Ayquinto.
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Dignan?
Yes.
I vote yes. Um, Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, under Unfinished Businesses, Proposed Amendments to the Northfield Township Zoning Ordinance Text to Repeal Enterprise Service District and Rezone All Existing Enterprise Service District Parcels to General Commercial. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Stanulito.
Um, I make the motion to amend the Northfield Township Zoning Ordinance Text to repeal the ES Enterprise Service District and rezone all existing ES enter, uh, Enterprise Service District parcels to GC General Commercial Districts as attached.
Support. There's a motion by Stanulito, supported by Ayquinto. Discussion on the motion.
I just want to make sure to clarify.
Yes, Mr. Stanulito.
That's a recommendation to the township board for the approval for that, for?
Okay, yep.
Sorry?
No, you're fine. Seeing no comments, uh, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ayquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Dignan?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is the repeal of highway commercial and rezoning from highway commercial to general commercial.
All right, I'll make the motion to amend the Northfield Township Zoning Ordinance Text to repeal HC Highway Commercial District and rezone all existing HC Highway Commercial parcels to GC General Commercial Districts. That recommendation to the township board to approve that.
There's a motion by Stanulito, supported by?
I'll support.
Chick? Questions on the motion? Yes, Mr. Ayquinto.
So, can we, I'd like to open a discussion about the adding the repair vehicles to permitted in a certain proximity to the highway. Because, again, if we, if a property owner purchased the property for that intent and it's been zoned that, I do not, as one commissioner, want to hold their hands or make them go through extra steps for this process of the, of the elimination of a district.
You're specifically speaking of item number ten, which is minor repair of vehicles provided all work and materials.
Correct. I'd like to add that the hotel motel makes sense in that, in that same. It does, too. That is correct, sir, yes. Thank you.
And automotive service stations, number five.
Right.
So, I, I, I guess my question would be to Mr. Sloan is, um, how would you foresee something like that working? Would it, would it be within a two mile, quarter mile, half mile from the high, from a, from a highway interchange?
Um, I think, uh, as it is now, um, if, if that were to be the case, let's say a quarter mile, um, I think we would be accommodating all of the HC areas.
And, and can we make it a permitted use within a quarter mile and a conditional use beyond that?
Uh, sure, sure, if it's within a quarter mile of the, of the interchange. And at the same time, there are some general commercial areas currently zoned general commercial at the interchange of North Territorial and, um, US twenty-three where there are existing automotive service stations. Right now, they're conditional uses. Those you'd be bringing into permitted uses. Um, if there were conditions of approval previously, I think those conditions would still carry forward with the approval. Um, it's just if they came back for something, they may not require conditional use approval. They might just say, "We have the use by right," but the changes are still subject to the zoning ordinance standards. They just wouldn't have to go through the conditional use steps. So, it would, it would lower the, it would lower the bar for many of the existing uses, which, um, you know, in some communities, they are permitted uses, so it wouldn't be out of the ordinary to have that.
So, I, I, with that, I, I guess I'd like to make a proposed amendment.
Before, before you do that, the question I have is quarter mile to half a mile. Uh, I want to say that the west end of that parcel mentioned of four thirty-five is probably more than a quarter mile.
Uh, yeah, the very west end probably is.
So, I, I, as one commissioner, would be in favor of a half a mile radius. Because then they would also address coil road area as well, because some of that may be close to the edge of a half, uh, over a quarter mile.
If, if that were the case, looking at a half mile radius, that would include, uh, most of the, most of the general commercial district around any interchange. There would be some other general commercial districts that it wouldn't include, but anything near an interchange, it would make it a permitted use essentially.
Which, which is where you would plan on seeing those to begin with?
Typically, yes, yes. You'd have those around there.
Okay. So, I'd like to make a amendment to add items, uh, under condish, add, add items from thirty-six, three ninety-one, items number two, five, and ten, which are hotels, motels, automotive service stations, and automotive repair facilities, to section thirty-six, ninety permitted uses when located within a half mile of an autumn, of a freeway interchange.
Can we just add it down to, it's number ten, twelve, and keep that other one in there for over?
Yeah, as, as number, well.
And the, just change.
Well, how would you like to do that, Patrick? Would you like to make number two, number twelve, number five, number thirteen, and number eleven, number, or number ten, number fourteen? Or twelve, thirteen, and fourteen? Add them to permitted uses?
Yeah, I think we'd be looking at, uh, oh, yeah, here we go, uh, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Correct.
And those uses, um, and then adding at the end, "When located within a half mile of a freeway."
Automotive interchange. Or, or a freeway interchange, correct.
Right, but you already have to be zoned.
And then for the, the way that they're written as conditional uses, we would add the text, "When located, um, more than..."
Yeah, right.
Right.
So, we're gonna have a, 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 eight miles.
When located beyond one half mile of a freeway interchange.
So, there's a motion to amend, or a motion, there's an amendment proposed. Is there support for the amendment?
I support that amendment.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Ayquinto. Discussion on the amendment. Sure, please, Mr. Roman.
Can you clarify it?
Absolutely. The, the amendment is to add, um, from section thirty-six, three ninety-one, conditional uses, to take the text from number two, hotels, motels, tourist home and boarding and rooming houses, and add that to number twelve under permitted uses, to take number five, automotive service stations, including minor repair services, subject to the requirements of thirty-six, seven, twelve, and adding that as number thirteen under permitted uses. Taking number ten, which is minor repair of vehicles provided all work and materials, equipment and waste products shall be contained within a completely enclosed building subject to the requirements of thirty-six, seven, twelve, adding that as number fourteen under a, can, uh, allowed uses or permitted uses, all with caveat, within a half of a mile of an automo, of a freeway interchange, and then adding to the text under conditional uses beyond a half mile from a freeway interchange. So, basically, they're all allowed within a half mile of an automotive, or a freeway interchange, and if it's beyond that in general commercial, it has to be a conditional use.
Half mile's quite lenient, is it not?
Where, where is the?
And if you're looking at the, at the expressway, a half mile covers.
But it has to be zoned general commercial, though.
Understood. I just, I just think the half mile is, seems extreme with the size, uh, zonings that we're looking at.
It's zoned, it is, but it's zoned right now. Quarter mile, totally affect a few.
Yeah, I know. Suggestion?
Yes.
Is there a way to just include the parcels that are currently highway commercial with the, with the exception in place or not?
Uh, best way to do that would be to have, make a different zoning district.
Okay, all right.
And we're re-complicating things.
Yeah, I'm just, was, just trying to suggest that maybe those, since it already exists that way, they could do it that way, but I'm gonna let my amendments stand as it is and, yes, Mr. Ayquinto.
When you say freeway intersection, are we going from the center of the highway?
Yeah, yeah, that's a measurement thing. Freeway interchange, not an intersection.
Yeah.
An interchange.
If we said the interchange, I would, I would go from the ramp, whatever, wherever the ramp is.
So, if I'm understanding that, are you saying right there?
Yeah, I would take the, I would, I would probably take the outermost areas of the ramp itself and go from there since it's technically the interchange.
And that's your interpretation today?
That would be my interpretation.
You have to understand the planner's gonna interpret it the way they do tomorrow.
So that, so, so we don't?
I'm sorry, gentlemen, we're in the middle of deliberations. I, 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 I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Ayquinto.
So that we don't create further hardships on a future planner or zoning administrator, I think we should say specifically where we, it's referred to, right?
Well, yeah, and, and I'd be okay with it from where the highway and the road intersect.
But that's still interpreting it.
No, it isn't. Where the two roads intersect. I mean, that's.
I thi, yeah, I think the question is whether we're looking at where, uh, for example, twenty-three would intersect with North Territorial Road and it would be somewhere under the bridge.
Right.
Um, whereas we're, we're saying perhaps on, from the off-ramp where we may go outside and measure that, uh, half mile or quarter mile or whatever it is from that, the off-ramp of that interchange to find the point at which to measure.
Because you can't do anything with them.
See. The only thing that I, I agree with Mr. Dignan is that taking a center point of the road is because, like, all of, all of the ramps are gonna be changed here, so, I mean, if you end up interpreting it at the end of the ramp, where's that gonna be? And then you're, you continuously move that out if they, like, they're gonna be putting roundabouts in, so then where are you gonna make it? So, I think at least making a, a point of reference being where the expressway and where the road intersects, that point, a half mile from that point in either direction should, should clarify.
We're talking about the center of the highway then.
Right.
Where the, where the center of the highway crosses the center of the crossroad.
And that's, and that's why I brought up the fact of a half a mile.
Yeah.
So, I mean, because if it was the inters, if it was the widest.
That was the intent of my motion.
So, we should clarify then, there would be the intersection of those two points.
I'm willing to add that to my amendment, to my proposed amendment.
So, it would be the midpoint of the intersecting roads?
Where the two roads intersect, a half mile from the, from where, where, from where the.
I, I would still support the amendment.
Have her read it back.
Are we okay down there on the?
No, I have a con, I mean, you're, you're discussing the motion then?
We, we are.
Okay.
I'm, I'm seeing if she's okay down there with the text. You got it?
I'll figure it out later.
Okay. She'll listen to it and type it up later. Yes, Mr. Roman, please.
I, I'm just in agreement with the proposed text as it was. The hotel motel, as I recall, um, we, we discussed that one before. It's usually a big piece of property, um, huge exterior parking, um, I don't see just jumping it all of a sudden back up to permitted uses. I think we even had a discussion regarding those before, and I, I think I have a question. Where, where did it lie previously in, in, in the, in the zoning districts before we made the amendments? I think it was still conditional at that point.
In highway commercial?
Correct. It's conditional.
It was, it was permitted in highway commercial only, but in the other zoning, the, was it, was it not in general?
Generally, it's a conditional use.
Which is where it remained as is. I, I guess I'm just, and I'm just seeing a, a, a big complex, uh, um, I just, I guess I don't agree with the reasoning just to switch it over, or that one or the automotive, to be honest, but, um, that's just my opinion.
Well, I thought it went from permitted to conditional.
Any other discussion?
Well, I was under the impression that it went from permitted in highway commercial to conditional and general commercial. Is that not correct for, for both of those items?
It was.
They went from permitted to conditional.
In both cases of automotive and hotel motel.
Yes, correct.
Oh, okay, so that I am, that's proper thinking. But with looking at the map here, it looks to me like the only thing it's gonna get, we're actually gonna expand Hotel Motel and the automotive repair to the, looks like the Eschelman property here and the six mile exit, and maybe, I'm not sure what that triangle is, right at Barker by the railroad track, it looks like there. That's the only other general commercial I see that would be affected that could actually be expanded into this thing somehow.
Well, at six, I can tell you, at six mile, it's all, it's all wetland. At six mile and, and, uh, Whitmore Lake Road there.
No, that's, that's Eschelman, it's on the other side.
Just, just to the south.
Eschelman equipment on the north, on the southeast side.
Right, so it's behind, behind Speedway.
I'm talking on the west side.
Yeah, the west side.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was that old gas station over there, but, uh, but under, behind Speedway is the Eschelman property, and that one would, would be expanded, I think, into this category, and.
Because that was zoned, or that's currently zoned, GC.
It's GC right now, so I'm just saying that you're, we'd be allowing it to go beyond what it is currently by, by that radius thing, which I don't think it's, I'm not opposed, I'm just saying, just pointing it out.
And this would bring a number of service stations into compliance.
Uh, correct. So, gas stations, if they're conditional uses, um, in GC, they would be permitted uses, but any conditions of approval that they have that run with their approval would probably still run.
Correct.
Because even if it was a condition of special land use approval, you know, that condition would, would transfer over to site plan approval.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none.
This is for the amendment.
Roll call on the amendment first.
Mr. Ayquinto?
What are we voting?
This is the.
The amendment.
Amendment.
Okay, yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Dignan?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
No.
Motion carries. Any further discussion on the actual motion that was made? Hearing none, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ayquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Dignan?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
No.
Motion carries. All right, the next item on the agenda is the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance text and revisions. I'll, I'll let you make the motion.
Um, I, I make the motion to recommend to the township board, uh, amendments to the Northfield Township Zoning Ordinance Text to revise the GC General Commercial District with RO Residential Office District, LC Local Commercial District, general provisions, sign regulations, and supplementary regulations and standards, and to, to delete floor area ratio standards from the GC Commercial District as amended and presented tonight.
I'll support.
Motion by Stanulito, supported by Chick. Discussion on the motion. Seeing no discussion on the motion, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ayquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Dignan?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion about the future, future, uh, further discussion regarding corrections to the current zoning map, which is attachment five, and I'll hand that over to Mr. Sloan.
Uh, thank you. Um, accompanying the zoning map, uh, the zoning map is dated November ninth, two thousand sixteen, and there's a memo with it dated November tenth. Um, this goes back a little over a month. At the November second planning commission meeting, uh, we reviewed a previous draft of the zoning map that was dated October twenty-seventh. That included several corrections to, uh, the current zoning map, uh, which is dated one, four, of sixteen. During and after that planning commission meeting, um, During and after that planning commission meeting, there were three errors that were brought to our attention, and there's three or four different parcels there, that were incorrectly zoned, and we looked at those parcels, as well as if there was an old resolution, or an old zoning map that showed that they were, in fact, zoned incorrectly on that previous map, dated October twenty-seventh, and in fact, they were, so we did correct those three errors. So the map, as it appears, this November ninth version, we believe is the correct version of the zoning map, that corrects a lot of the past mistakes that had shown up on a zoning map, and there are other, there are a couple other notable features of this zoning map, the first is that the AR district is colored in light green, because white is not a good color for a zoning district, sometimes if things are not colored, or in areas, you forget to color it, someone will assume it's just ag, so assigning a color, no matter the shade, to a district is, is good for visual purposes. The other is that each zoning district, it has a lot of different labels on it, and each district has a bold outline around it, so if someone's reading the map, if they have a color deficiency, or they're colorblind, they can find the zoning district, because each one is labeled, and they have a thick line around it, so it makes it more readable for, for more users. So with that, I'll, I'll wrap up that discussion, and there's no motion necessarily needed for the planning commission, because these are reflections of zoning changes that have already taken place, just a discussion on it, and if there were any other corrections, errors, or edits.
Does anyone have any other comments or questions? Mr. Stanalicho?
I just wanna make sure, we're talking about the zoning map, in that if all these recommendations go through to change things, this is gonna be then changed to go along with what the township board recommends, right?
That's correct.
Alright.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on, new business, which we have none tonight, next item is the approval of the preceding minutes from November second.
I make the motion to approve the minutes as presented, and dispense with the, with the reading. Support, thanks.
Motion by Stanalicho, supported by Iquinto, any question on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on agenda is final call to the public, if there's anyone from the public that would like to address the board, please step to the microphone, and please remember to state your name and address for the record.
Dale Brewer, one-one-five-four-eight East Shore Drive, Whitmore Lake, Michigan. Something that is, and it was just changed somewhat, but if you look at the properties that are at six, on the west side of Six Mile Road and Coil Road, those properties that are currently zoned highway commercial, on the north end of that, are all in the Horseshoe Lake subdivision, they're all deed restricted, and they cannot be ever developed as resident, as a highway commercial, general commercial, or otherwise. It's unfortunate that you have this zoning on them, because they are now taxed as commercial properties, so they're paying a much higher tax, and they're used as residential, and never can be converted without going back to court, and having a, having the court actually alter the zoning, and change all of the deed restrictions that are on these properties. It's something that should be looked at, should be corrected, and brought back, so that they are residential, so they're not taxed at a higher rate than what they can ever use their property for. So if you would please take that into consideration, and put this on your agenda, and make this correction, I'm sure that all of those people up there would dearly appreciate it, because they're paying probably two to three times the tax rate that you or I are paying as a residential property owner, because you have it zoned as a commercial use. And the zone, and what happens when this happens, is the assessor has to use this to establish his values, and this is where it gets caught up, it's not, it's not considered a residential use anymore, so when the assessor sets a value, he uses the commercial rate value, not a residential rate value.
Yeah, I, I, Mr. Brewer, we, we talked about this extensively last time, and went down, and, and that is actually not the case, what you just stated, there's a multitude of factors that go into the assessing of a property, not just necessarily the zoning, but the current use, it's, and, and, you know, you're, you're stating that a property would be three hundred percent more valuable, as a limited industrial-type zoning, when in fact, you just stated that it couldn't be used for limited industrial-type zoning.
It can't be reused, because it's deed restricted.
Right, right, and unless the Horseshoe Lake Association or Corporation releases the deed restriction.
And the only way that can be done is through court action.
Okay, well, that's, that's.
And I've had this discussion with the assessor, and he is the one that directed me to bring it back to your attention, so that it could be corrected, so if you have different information, I would ask that you be with the assessor, and do something to assist these people there, 'cause I have represented property owners in that area, at the board review, and to the assessor, and these, this was his statement, and his direction, was to bring it to the planning commission, because he could not consider any other values on those properties, once you have established it as a commercially zoned property, even if it is used as strictly residential, and if you look at the rates on them, you will find that they are substantially higher than a residential use. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. LaFave?
Earl LaFave, I'd like to thank the board, uh, planning commission for the consideration of keeping some of those permitted uses, I think that will enhance our ability to market that property, 'cause these are some of the type of people we're talking to, and just a thought, if the issue was to come up again, a definable point, and this is just a suggestion, could have been the right-of-way lines of the expressway, as another reference point, if you ever wanted to use that as a reference point, because that then tells you exactly where the limits of the expressway, or the M dot would have, just a suggestion.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else, yes, please? Just state your name again for the record, please.
Holly McNichols, seven-zero-two-four dollar. I have a question to clarify, I think that you just changed your, and I don't have the right words, commercial district, from a quarter mile to a half a mile, because of one property?
No, not at all, we changed a complete zoning district, we eliminated a zoning district, and, and moved all the properties from that district, there were a multitude into another zoning district, that's what we did.
What was the quarter mile versus the half a mile?
Some item, some items or uses were allowed uses, or permitted uses, under the previous zoning, and when it came, when those properties were moved into the new zoning, there were some that were permitted, and some that were not.
It, it seemed like it was a quarter mile, correct?
No, never was, that was a discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, it never was a quarter mile, it was just an allowed use on those properties previously, it was a permitted use to begin with, we, we said that, when we changed it to general commercial, all general commercial properties within a half of a mile of the intersection, can be allowed to have these three items, as well as all other allowed uses.
And what was the quarter mile?
It never happened, it was a discussion item, it never, never was voted upon, never was considered.
Sorry, I wasn't clear.
No, 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 please, I understand, a lot of discussion going back and forth.
Thanks.
Yep, I appreciate the opportunity to clarify. Anyone else from the public that would like to address the board? Seeing no one, we'll go on, comments from the commissioners? Start with Mr. Iquinto?
Yes, thank you. First, I would like to say thank you to Marlene Shockley, for her service on the planning commission, for the time that she's been here, for the general public, so they understand she had to step down, since she was elected supervisor, so she could not be part of the planning commission anymore. Secondly, I would like to, I know that there are two other seats up, one of which is Mr. Dignan's, and one Mr. Stanalichos, I would hopefully suggest to the commis, to the madam supervisor, that she seriously look at reappointing both of those individuals, they are both positive integral parts of the planning commission, they have both been added value discussion to the planning commission, and added thought, and I, as one commissioner, have appreciated serving with both you individuals on this board, and so I thank you, and I do extend my support, as one commissioner, for your reappointment to this board, thank you.
Ms. Chick?
Yep, I just wanted to thank the people that came to speak to the public hearing, that your comments do make a difference, and, and we had not considered, I don't believe, when we were discussing about general commercial and highway commercial, the marketability of the properties, so that was a good point to bring to us tonight, so I appreciate that, and your questions as well, and Mr. Stan, uh, Mr. Iquinto is correct, there will be actually three openings with Mr. Stanalicho, Mr. Iquinto, and Marlene Shockley's.
No, 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 not myself.
Oh, I'm sorry, you can't dig that, Sam, okay, I'm sorry, and Marlene Shockley's position as well, so, yeah, if any current board member, or planning commission members want to reapply, she actually asked that you submit a letter of interest to either her, or to township manager, Howard Fink, if anybody else in the audience would like to, or anybody out there in the listening public, they'll, will take all letters of consideration, and make sure that Marlene, and, or Mr. Fink, get those letters, and I apologize. Merry Christmas, everybody, and Happy New Year, if we don't see you before then.
Thank you. Mr. Roman?
Well, I just, I just wanted to make a clarification, that although those items that we discussed were conditional, it's not that they were not permitted, so, which is a misstatement.
Correct, I apologize.
They're still able to go in there, but under a different, you know, different procedure, but other than that, thank you.
Yes, please.
I just wanted to point out one other, by expanding, looking at the North Territorial Exchange there, pretty much all the general commercial that's, that's in that area, has probably been now opened up for whatever the half-mile radius that we just added on the thing, which, I'm not saying is good or bad, I'm just saying that it's probably, it's widening of that particular ability. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stanalicho?
I, I'd like to say a few things, first of all, for the, the individual that was out in the audience, the zoning stuff is very confusing, so it, it takes a long time, even for, unless you've had some experience, that when you sit on the planning commission here, to actually understand the text, and how, what it all means, so I was gonna jump in and try and answer some of your questions, and everybody else did a good job, but it, it is very confusing, so you did a great job in asking the questions that you did, and, you know, understanding those, so just wanted to give you a compliment there, and tell you I'm glad that you're here to ask questions. And I do wanna say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, in case we do not meet here, to everybody out in the audience, and then I wanna make sure that, as I always do, to keep our men and women in uniform, today, seventy-five years ago, is the day that Pearl Harbor was bombed, and twenty-four hundred Americans lost their lives because of that, and it's, it's one of those things in history that we need to keep remembering, and keep those people that lost their lives, and all the people after that lost their lives, for us to be able to have our freedoms that we do today, it's something that is easy to forget, and unfortunately, if you have a tendency to forget history, it has a tendency to repeat itself, but we wanna make sure we keep our men and women in uniform, and first responders, in our thoughts and prayers, because their sacrifices every day are the ones that are allowing us to have this freedom of expression, so, thank you. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stanalicho, as well Merry Christmas, and have a Happy New Year, it's been my distinct honor this year to serve as the chairman of the planning commission, and I just wanted to thank my fellow board members for that, for that privilege, you know, I've, I've enjoyed all of my time here on the planning commission, but especially this past year, as we've gone through some challenges and difficult things, you know, I've tried to make it my goal to mend the communication between the public and, and this board, and I, I hope that we've done that, if the supervisor on the board sees fit, asked me to serve again, I would welcome the opportunity to do so, and would look forward to it, I don't know that, even if I am asked, and I do serve, whether I will be your chair or not, but I, I do appreciate the opportunity to, to serve here, and with all of my esteemed colleagues, they, they, this has been a phenomenal planning commission, this has been a phenomenal, I mean, year, we've, we've gone through a lot of stuff, and I appreciate it, I appreciate very much the public, and their participation in coming out, and expressing their concerns, you know, we've tried to have a little bit more of a dialogue, as much as we can, with the public. With that, I, I'd just like to reiterate what Mr. Stanalicho said, and, you know, to keep our men and women in uniform in our prayers, and with that, next, now, the next meeting is currently scheduled for December twenty-first, I don't think we have any applicants for them.
None that I'm aware of.
Yeah, and, and, I don't know, I don't think, pending any applicants, if we'll have a meeting or not at this point in time, unless something does come up, so.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Support. There's a motion, and the support, there was a question prior to that motion, but.
I'm sorry?
There was a motion, there was a question.
I'll resend my motion.
Okay, there was a question as to whether or not just to cancel December twenty-first at this point in time. If there's a motion for that effect, we can do that.
I make a motion to cancel the December twenty-first planning commission meeting of the Northfield Township Board, Northfield Planning Commission Board.
I'll support that.
This is a motion, Iquinto, supported by Stanalicho, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, nobody wants to be here the week before Christmas, alright, and.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, appreciate you coming out this evening.